Are ESSER funding for this year? It comes to about four million of that federal funding.
Okay, so we're looking at a budget going beyond next year. That amount of money will not be sitting.
Federal will be decreased, yes.
Okay.
Yes, sir. And we'll be back in twenty-four, twenty-five to about a thirty-eight million dollars, Mr. Kane.
Okay.
Because ESSER one is depleted, ESSER two, and now we are working on ESSER three.
Thank you.
Mr. Edwards, thank you for your presentation, well presentation, I understand. I don't have any questions for you per se.
Yes, sir.
My questions are, I think this is a little bit premature. Because the county and the city can't even agree on how we're gonna fund the school per pupil. We can't even agree on it. We don't have a contract, okay? And, you know, Davenport's public finance spent a lot of time and a lot of our money to come up with an analysis. They gave us four options. City council met and we discussed it and we liked option four because that is fair and equitable. It takes into account LCI, which is our ability to pay both us and the county. And we received word on March tenth from the county that just flat out no. Flat out no, we're gonna continue as we've done in the past. Well, my opinion, and this is my opinion as a city councilman, it's not my opinion. I'm not speaking for city council, mayor, city council, or the city manager. This is my opinion. My opinion is that they don't have the unilateral decision-making properties for the school board and the city of Emporia. They don't. We don't have a contract at this point. I don't know what we need to do to get to a contract at this point. It doesn't seem like anybody wants to negotiate. I'm a very simple person, I'm not a politician, so I'm gonna speak plainly. I don't believe that we are gonna be able to reach a contract as long as people keep saying that what they're not gonna do, to be honest with you. In my opinion, the county doesn't get to decide how the city spends their money. We have our own school board. Therefore, we have our own school system. State law specifically states that as long as we have our own school system, we have to enter into a contract agreement with the board of supervisors for the county of Greensville to decide on how these schools are funded. And I'm not opposed to entering into a contract, I'm really not. But basically what I'm saying is, is that I agree with your budget and I like it, but now how do we get to paying for it? And this is my public, or this is my comment for the public that's in attendance. Because they're the ones that voted, all of us here. That's the bottom line. They voted us in and here we are arguing about money, how to fund for these kids. And I think it's wrong. Like I said, I'm new, I've been a city councilman for three months, so I see things very, very simply. I'm not a politician. So, my thing about it is, is and I'm gonna tell you exactly how I will vote. I will not vote for any arrangement, whether contractual or agreement on terms, for anything that is not fair and equitable to both the city of Emporia and the county of Greensville. Point two, I will not vote affirmative for any contract that does not grant our two representatives on the school board for the county of Greensville their right to vote to decide how we spend this money. I'm not gonna vote affirmative on any of that. Those are two tenants that I will, I guess, as the kids say, that's a hill I'll die on. Because it's not fair to the kids, it's not fair to our constituents, and it's not fair to anybody involved in this situation. Okay? I don't want to get to this point, but since we do have our own school division, state law clearly defines that we have our own school division, so we need to enter into a contract with them. Now, they may take a different view of it, and I would be willing to entertain anything that they would have to say, and I'm willing, I'm prepared to answer questions for anybody that has questions. But if anybody disagrees with me, that's fine, that's what this is all about, is about agreeing and disagreeing. But at this point, like I said, I loved the way everything was put together. Ms. Barber spoke very eloquently, and I believe in what y'all are doing. If we're making progress, which from these stats it says that we're making progress, because at the end of the day, it's about return on investment. And you're making progress. Therefore, we'll keep investing in you and the children of this community. And that's what I'm here for, I ran on that. The children of the city of Emporia and what's best for them. So, if anybody has any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them based on my research. But that's just my opinion. Again, I don't speak for city council, I don't speak for the city manager. But can't we, my plea to the county board of supervisors is, can't we get together in a room, all of us, and discuss this and stop letting lawyers decide things? Because the letter we got from y'all was from your lawyer to our lawyer. That's improper on its face. That's improper on its face. Because you were elected to govern the county, we were elected to govern the city. So can't we get together in a room and talk about it? Instead of having lawyers talking to each other? Because they weren't elected and none of them have kids that go to these school systems. Thank you for your time.
Well, I have a follow-up to your statement. I felt the same way that you felt when I first took on this board. And we came and we begged and we begged, and we did sit down, and we sent a whole year meeting with members of the city council, members of the board of supervisors, and we sent letter after letter to the city, no response. Letter after letter to the city, no response. This went on for a whole year. I felt the same way you felt. It's gotta be a way that we can all get together, have a conversation, and get this done. We kept coming up and giving proposals, no response. No response. Now that we're giving you a response, yes, there is still work that has to be done, but it's gonna give and take on both parts. Sometimes it's where your priorities are, because you keep on saying what you don't have money for, but yet you're hiring employees from the county, paying them twice as much as what we were paying them. But yet you say you don't have funds for other things. Sometimes it's where you wanna spend your money at. Just like you don't want us to tell you where to spend your money from, you can't tell us that same thing. We all have to come to the table and we all have to do some give and take, and that hasn't happened.
Let me say this before you say anything.
Well, my issue, and let me just respond.
Let me say this before you say what you wanna say.
Before, just let me respond.
No, let me speak first.
She addressed me, she addressed me, let me respond.
Wait a minute, wait one minute, both of you, wait one minute.
She addressed city council, who's she gonna address?
Wait, wait one moment.
So, and I agree with you. I agree, again, I've been doing this for three months, four months, okay? But the thing about it is, is, you know, you wanna talk about inflexibility? I can show you the letter that y'all sent if y'all haven't read it. If you didn't help draft it. And it just flat out says no. No, hey, let's talk about this. And I'm gonna go ahead and tell you, since I've been on city council, I know that city manager has made several attempts to contact y'all, several attempts. Maybe it's y'all aren't getting the word. Maybe the lawyer's not letting you know. I don't know, I don't know. Again, I'm not throwing any stones at anybody. I'm just telling you that maybe your lawyer's not letting you know, or whoever's receiving the letter's not letting you know. And if they aren't, then you need to look into that, that's got nothing to do with us as a city council. But what I'm telling you is, is to send a letter like this, just unilaterally saying no, we're gonna move forward as we always have? Absolutely not, not gonna happen.
Sir, you said you've been on the board for three months, right? I've been on this board for almost five years. When I first came on this board, the first thing that I was faced with, this county was willing to spend up to twenty percent more in the budget than what the city was spending. I've been sitting there for five years and never had one response from the city that made any sense to me. After three years of this county spending more money than what the city was spending, on June the third is two thousand and twenty-one, we decide we are not gonna kick the cane down the road no more. So our position right now is this is ADM. It makes only sense to me that the county pays exactly the same amount of money per child as the city pays, and that's where we at. Each locale pays the exact same money. And I'm assuming the people standing up here, I don't see how anybody can argue at that point. If we pay the same dollar per child, y'all pay per child, I can't see how we can come up with anything different. Like Ms. Hscrap just got to saying, we have met, met, met. And the only thing we've gotten back from the city is absolutely nothing.
Let me address that. I don't recall ever where we did not respond, but I do recall there was a letter sent to the board of supervisors that you all didn't even know about. So, but that's not what I'm speaking about, we're never getting anywhere because of this. Because we simply can't have a conversation. Everybody, this is not Burger King, you can't have everything in your way. We've got to compromise here and say it's about the children, it's not about us.
Exactly right.
I came through Greensville County Public Schools. We can't attract, neither the county or the city can attract anyone. Because of the school system, we've gotta fix this. And not one person that's sitting here tonight can do it alone. We've got to figure it out. But what we can't do is, we can't have, because if Eric was here tonight, our attorney, he works for us, he works for us, and it needs to be clear, attorneys can't make decisions for children. We've got to come together, yes, we've been in rooms, we've met and we've talked, and we left with nothing. We've got to come together, support the superintendent, support each other, so these kids can come to school where they can learn, where parents have to stop taking their children to Southampton, Brunswick County, private schools, it just does not make sense. And at some point, since nothing makes sense, we have to be the ones responsible for making it make sense. I'm tired, five years in, five years in and we're still nowhere. But anyway, Dr. Edwards, this is what I had. So, we're currently, last year you asked for ten million dollars. Emporia City is paying currently four point two right now, Greensville County six point one, and you're requesting five point five. So the new total, and I just want the public to know this as well, the new ask, I just need it confirmed, that the new ask is sixteen million dollars. That's what you really need to do what you need to do, sixteen million dollars, correct? Okay, alright, thank you. And again, as I close, we've got to do something to fix our school system to where our children can stay here and learn.
I agree.
And we have, we have done something to fix this school system. After three years of kicking the cans down the road, after three years of the county paying more money than the city, we decided that it's only fair that the county pays exactly the same thing as the city, and the city pays the exact same thing as the county. And I don't even call that rocket science. I don't think anybody sitting at all can disagree with us saying each locale paid the exact same money per child. That only makes sense.
What is your position on each locale paying the same exact per child?
That's our position.
In other words, option four? Is that the per pupil?
No, no, that's not option four.
Yeah, see, because ADM doesn't take into account LCI.
Option four has the county spend almost nine hundred thousand dollars more than the city. That's what option four is, and that's not each locale paying the same amount of money. Go back and look at your option four.
You spend roughly twenty percent more because you roughly have twenty percent more students going to the city.
No, sir, it's ADM, sir, it is ADM. All you got to do is this is, and I got the figures from Dr. Edwards. The only thing you got to do right now is this, is to take his budget, divide it by the number of students that he have, and you come up with a number. And you take that number and multiply it by the number of kids in the city and the county, and that's how you term your budget. Nobody paid any more per child. We're not talking about what the federal paid, the state paid, we're only talking about what the local locale paid. And everybody pays the exact same amount per child. If you take the number of his budget, multiply it by the number of students, you get a number, and multiply the number of students in the county and in the city, then you're gonna term with each locale paid.
That's going strictly ADM.
That's strictly ADM.
If it was as simple as that, we'd say yes.
It's just that simple.
It doesn't take into account LCI, the ability to pay for each locality. It doesn't take that into account. That's the reason we paid Davenport seventy-five thousand dollars, thirty-seven five from y'all, thirty-seven five from us, to do that. And when they came up with it, it's a flat out no from y'all. So, I'm just saying, I'm not a number cruncher, Davenport is, and they told us the way to go.
Right, yeah, but they told you the way to go, but the county's spending nine hundred thousand dollars more than the city. And that's what Davenport came up with.
Because you have more students.
No, no, that has nothing to do with more students, sir. Do you understand math, or do I need to give you a math course?
You can lie.
Alright, alright.
Y'all number crunching people over there, if you take the local budget, the local budget from what Dr. Edwards had, and take that number of students he have, and you multiply that by the local budget, you get a number, I think it was fifty-four hundred dollars, and you multiply that by each student in the county and the city, that's how you get your budget. Each locale paid the exact same amount of money. If it's fifty-four hundred dollars, you multiply that to the number of students in the city, and if it's fifty-four hundred dollars, we multiply that same number by the number of students in the county. And that term was his budget, am I right or wrong?
That's oversimplifying, but okay.
No, that's ADM. Every locale paid the exact same amount per student.
Okay, Ms. Dr. Edwards. Any other questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I'm sitting here listening mathematically, you know. We are placing children's lives in numbers. And that's not where we should be in two thousand and twenty-three. We should get together, we're gonna have to get together, we're gonna have to calm our tempers and just speak. Excuse me? And we need to think about the child's future. They are our future leaders. They are our bankers, they are our engineers, they're gonna be our teachers, our preachers. They're gonna be city council members. They're gonna be the mayor, they're gonna be the city manager. Y'all are not gonna be here in twenty years. I doubt if anybody, if we make it ten years, if we make it ten years, we'll be doing great. But I think that the fact that we are talking about educating our children, I will come in and teach mathematics and reading, because I have, I'm endorsing both of those. I have a master's in reading and a degree in mathematics. But nobody has asked. I will come in for free and get four children at a table and teach. That's what we need to think about, we don't need to argue about an ADM and a
Yes, we do.
whatever else y'all are talking about here, I mean, like I've been saying all along. And I, Mr. Councilman Lilly, he said it very well, I'm not a politician either, I'm an educator. I taught thirty years in Southampton County and five years in Sussex County. I'm endorsed in mathematics and reading. We had to do that in Southampton County before we could teach middle school. I've taught elementary, middle, and high school. And I've been an adjunct professor at a college level. And to think that we are sitting here tonight wasting time. I've been hearing about meetings, meetings, meetings. And nobody is interested in putting our representatives back on the school board. Forget all of this petty stuff, you know. What is it, you don't like somebody? We need love here. Where does love come in? L-O-V-E. The whole city need love, amen, amen. Amen, everybody. You know, I'm at the age now that, you know, nobody, I don't care what they say about me, I don't care what they do to me. It's nothing, nobody can do and say to me. I'm telling you, because I know a God, I know a God, and I know he's keeping me. The tragedies that I've experienced since two thousand and eleven, I've lost a daughter in a horrible murder. She was shot and burned. And y'all are sitting here, and she was a medical doctor. A medical doctor had gone through twelve years of medical school. And it hurt my heart to know that we are losing a generation of children. We have a generation, longer than a decade, we've already lost, we've already lost. COVID put a hurt, you listening to the news? The reading levels now, third graders cannot read. If you can't read and do super math by seventh grade, you probably never will. The elementary school is the place where you get your foundation, that's it. It should, the first teacher should be parents, parents. You, we can't do it all. You coming in Nashville, Tennessee, do you want, do you think that's gonna happen to them? It happened to me. That's why I'm speaking tonight. I am sick and tired of being sick and tired. It don't make sense. Now, we are sitting here tonight arguing over money. Money is going away, we're not gonna even have a dollar after a while, you're not gonna see any money. Look, it's time out, we have to do better. And we don't, one thing is L-O-V-E, we don't like each other. That's where it started, it started in the churches. You go to church, sit beside somebody, and you can't stand them. And I know I didn't mean to say all this, but I don't make no apologies. I make no apologies for the truth. And I have been to school all my life, I have been in school, and school is my love. I was in a doctoral program for five years raising my grandson. I sat up night after night, I wrote a seven-chapter dissertation, I wrote a book. And I've written so much, I don't even like to write a letter now. Don't want to read one, really. Please, let's get together. Let's get together and put down these petty anythings that we're dealing with. We, let's put love back, we got to educate our children, that's our future. That's our future. Guns are everywhere now, I don't hear anybody talking about the guns. You think it's just happening in Nashville? No. It could happen here, it could happen here.
Well, Dr. Curry, I'm gonna put the love back in it for you right now. And what we're saying is definitely not petty. There's nothing petty about the city and the county paying the exact same amount of money that they're giving the kid. So if our concern is educating our kids, then I can't see why the city have a problem with paying the exact same amount of money per child as the county. That's love, that's love, that's not petty. I don't see why we should have our taxpayers in the county spending more per child than the city.
One thing, you have more students.
No, no, you, 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 you.
I know you said.
Yeah, we're gonna pay anyway because we have more students.
But you told me you was a math teacher, so if you did anything about math, I'm gonna give you these numbers one more time. If you, she's math. You're math. Because our position is ADM, the county and the city pay the exact same amount per child, and that's not rocket science.
You're still going back mathematics, you're still talking about money. And I was talking about lives.
Let's move on, let's move on, please.
I'm talking about the lives, I'm talking about the welfare of our children.
Yes, I think it's very important for both boards, the welfare of the children, and we wanna make sure that our children in the city and county are educated to the highest levels that we can give them as representatives of both boards. And we'll definitely get together at a later date and try to come to some type of conclusion on this. Because it has to be done.
I'm not arguing.
No, we don't think you are either.
It might sound like one, but.
Everybody's just passionate about educating our children.
That's my passion.
That's right.
Our children.
Yes, ma'am.
Children, because they're innocent, they are innocent, and they can't, if we, as elected officials, can't speak up and stand up for our children or for something, we'll fall for anything. And that's all I'm doing. You have your opinion and I have mine.
Mine's not an opinion, mine is the city and the county pay the exact same thing, that's not an opinion.
Okay, alright, we're gonna move on next. Are there any more questions directly towards the budget from either board? With there being none, do you have anything further, Dr. Edwards?
No, Madam Chair, thank you for allowing us to present the twenty-three, twenty-four school budget.
Thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, since public comments were added to the agenda, at this time, if anyone from the public would have anything to say directed toward the budget, if anyone had anything to say directed toward the budget, and keep your comments at three minutes, please state your name when you come to the podium.
Okay, my name is Jacquelyn Belk, I sit on the city of Emporia School Board. I wanna thank city council member, Mr. Saunders, for adding that clarity to the numbers because maybe the school board can review and do a reduction of excessive staff to bring some of those costs down of maybe repetitive staff. I know we have principal coaches, we have a multitude of assistant principals. Maybe we can share some services or something like that. But as a city school board member, I feel that when people come to me with concerns about purchases that the school board makes, decisions that the school board makes, I have to constantly tell them, I don't have a recognizable voice with the school board because it's all the county's decisions, it's not the city's decision. I do trust and hope that you all can come to some agreement so that there is true representation for the kids, not just the county and not just the city. All of us making good decisions for the children, because a lot of people are being left out. But as you said, the money is going somewhere, so there needs to be accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else having comments?
Good evening, my name is Tim Sloan, a city resident. I just wanna say that this meeting has really shown a lot of people true colors, and we, the community, are suffering. And with being in the city, we don't have a voice, I feel that we shouldn't give them a dime until we get a voice. I feel that we need to just pull out, pull our students, create our own school, because this low-performing school is hindering the economic development. No one wants to buy homes in the area that has a low-performing school. Businesses do not want to play businesses here if our school cannot produce students that can fill the jobs. But we're going back and forth throwing shots. But then you wanna come to our local churches and you wanna solicit our support in your votes on what you believe in, what you're gonna do, and we don't see any of you, well, some of you, until the next election time. I'm gonna tell you, don't come to my church if you're not gonna do anything different. Until we can get a contract, until our voice can be heard, I'm an employee of Greensville County Public Schools, and I don't even have a voice. It's hostile, it's retaliatory, and the nepotism has caused me to be prescribed antidepressants. And that's just redundant and it's absurd. So I'm telling you now, when election time come, don't come to my church. Don't come to my church saying what you gonna do, what you gonna believe, and we gonna be back, because you're not gonna come back to next election time. And that's all I got to say, and I'm not, you don't worry about me returning to Greensville County Public Schools, but if we do open our own school, I will gladly volunteer to help educate our students in the city of Emporia.
Alitha Kane, retired school teacher, and I want to speak on behalf of the budget. Dr. Edwards asked me some years ago, could I come in and help volunteer as a mentor to keep teachers here? And one of the reasons why we cannot keep teachers here, good teachers here, is because we don't adequately fund the budget. Now, I'm gonna say this, I put in my time and Mayor Kerry, Dr. Edwards has solicited help, you know, from the community, and I have more than helped, and several people sitting in here have volunteered to help. But we wouldn't have to have as many mentors to come in to keep good teachers if we could just adequately fund the budget. And I do agree, we shouldn't have to argue. because we should be more than happy to invest in our children because our children are going astray. We need to invest in the school system, in our children. And without having to say, we've spent this amount, this one's spending that amount. So let's invest in our children so that we don't have to go out and continuously getting new teachers constantly. Let's learn, and that's when you show love, when you put your money where your mouth is.
Good evening, my name is Adrian Chapman. I am a product of Greensville County Public Schools. I am an employee of Greensville County Public Schools. And I just want to talk about the budget and our students. We took a huge hit with COVID, a huge one. There was learning loss. We are coming back. Our students are improving every day. And they should not have to suffer because of money. We have to work together collectively to do what's best for our students. I am a product of Greensville County Public Schools. I know how far we can go, I know how successful we can be. We have to give our children a chance. I am asking the Board of Supervisors, the City Council, and the school board, please work together. I am urging you to, the Board of Supervisors and the City Council, please work together for our children. They deserve the best. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Marva Dunn, I live in the city. And even though I know anyone who reads the paper or all of this social media know that I am an appointed school board member for Greensville County Board and the City of Emporia. However, I'm not speaking as a school board member today, so I want you to forget that. Please forget that, if you can. I'm speaking as a taxpayer. As far as the budget is concerned, yes, we need to come together. We need to put as much money, as Chapman said, in our kids because they are our future. They are our future. So as far as the budget is concerned, I don't oppose any money, extra money going into the budget. But I do oppose the fact that the city, even though we don't have a contract, y'all still arguing over contracts. I'm so glad there was no kids out here, and I hope it ain't too many parents out here because y'all were embarrassing. Embarrassing. After this fiesta here, I don't even want to tell them about I live in Emporia, Greensville. But I'm here, so while I'm here, I'm going to try to do what I can and be straightforward. And I'm like me, I care, I don't care what you like me. Just respect me and treat me with respect because that's what I'm going to do for you. We need to stop arguing, get all this personal crap gone. And if you do have more students, and if the city got more students, they're going to pay more money. If the county got more students, they're going to pay more money. That's the facts, period. My final word is, you don't have a contract, but the city is still paying. So why is it that my tax dollars don't have a voice? And I never thought that I would ever say this, but until my tax dollars, my tax dollars don't have a voice, I implore each city member who pays taxes to put pressure on all of y'all
One minute.
to give us a voice, to give us a voice. And until that happens, if I had anything to say, the city wouldn't pay you another dime.
Any more comments?
Good evening.
Good evening.
That's the right response, from a crowd like this on a day like this, is the weakest response. Reminds me, Pastor, when I was at church trying to do the collection. And I say, "Good morning," they got the same thing, "Good morning." Same thing. Concerning the budget. Apparently you had a consultant people. Pardon me for not stating my name. Melvin Hines, born and raised in the county, product of the school system here. Now live in the City of Emporia. You all paid consultants, people that knew what they were doing to look into this and give you figures and information and a plan. What I see from both boards, with all due respect to my spouse, is inflexibility. That's what I see, lack of cooperation, arrogance. So you hire consultants who know what they're doing, they give you a plan, and you don't want to even look at that because you know more than the consultants. You all really need to take a different approach because the county and the city, it's not just the kids that suffer, we're all suffering. And we may all be insufferable, but we shouldn't be. You don't know enough to solve the problem, that's apparent. It's apparent to me because the problem isn't solved. Arrogant, insensitive to each other, insensitive to the community. You can't learn, you can't grow, you can't change. The boy is profit from this.
One minute.
Boy, I don't need a whole nother minute. I just wish I could remember everything I said so I could say it again real quickly. This is ridiculous to Dr. Edwards. I hope I have the name correct. I've seen you twice at meetings. I've seen you have to deal with this nonsense twice. I hope you don't have to deal with it again. We used to have a tag program, Talented Gifter Program. We used to have a block system, we used to be innovative and a leader in the state in education. We're on the other end of the spectrum now, and it's not due to you. Thank you very much.
Good evening, my name is Gloria Robinson, I'm a resident of the City of Emporia, but I also am a taxpayer in the County of Greensville because I own property there as well. Just to give you some background about me, I majored in economics in college. So there's this thing called economies of scale. So if you have more kids in your school system than the overhead of the building and the power and the administration is spread over a larger group of kids. But maybe I'm part of the problem because my son, who, when he was in seventh grade, the quality of his education was going downhill, and I said, "You know what? He's my number one." So I pulled him. I'm a big proponent of public schools. I went to public schools in Norfolk Public School System. My daughter Cassie was a co-advocating of her class here at Greensville County. But my son is number one, so I pulled him, and I moved him to Southampton County Public Schools. Zero tolerance for bad behavior. I know he's going to get the best education because when he graduates, he wants to go to Johns Hopkins. But they're not going to look at a kid that's going to be graduating from a school that's not fully accredited. I did what I did because he's my number one. But if you have more kids who go to school here with a better quality education, the economies of scale, you disperse that cost of that education over a larger number of kids. But if you don't address the quality, those kids, that numbers are going to keep on going down, down, down. It's just a basic economic principle. So there are a lot of people here I see that have their kids and their grandkids. They knew their kids at Southampton County Public Schools or homeschooling or private school because their kids are number one. And I know you guys believe in that, too. So just put more quality back in schools. Support the teachers when they have bad behavior in the classroom so they won't go to another school system. I mean, you can pay somebody a million bucks, but they treat it poorly, they're not going to stick around. Thank you.
Thank you. With there being no more public comments, can I get a motion to adjourn? Has been moved to second that we adjourn, all those in favor of the roll call vote? Supervisor Brown?
Aye.
Supervisor Kane?
Aye.
Supervisor Conwell? Chair Ashra?
Aye.
Our school board seeking a motion for adjournment. Motion been moved and properly seconded, all in favor of making the motion, saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? None being heard, we adjourn.